Tova, can you hear us now?
Yes.
All right, awesome. And we got you. Does this speak? Is that on high? Yeah, it's on. That's good.
I think you've been told along from your laptop.
Hey, Tova, can you give us a test real quick? Can you say?
Yeah, yeah, it's working fine now. I couldn't hear a thing before.
Perfect. And for tonight, since I didn't bring a tripod, we'll swing things around whoever's talking. Feels like you're here, doesn't it?
It does.
All right. So anyways, it is 7:04. We'll call the meeting. Actually, you know what? So you might scooting down here, and what I'll do is I'll put the computer and the camera here, and that way we're all like here. I was gonna set up two computers, and I realized I didn't. Didn't bring them up. Yeah, this is longest. That's my other one. Yeah, there's probably another one in there. Fancy paperweights without batteries. All right. Well, we'll figure it out next time. I was gonna bring a tripod and put it here, but it's all right.
Put it on top of the chair right here. Oh, we're trying to make this like film project for you.
Yeah.
All right. How's that? We just gotta speak loudly because the microphone is on the, is on there. So we might repeat for you. If you need us to repeat, just say, just let us know, all right, Tova?
It's fine.
All right, awesome. I guess thank you very, very much for coming. So slightly after seven, we're gonna start this up, our first hybrid meeting. So first, we seat everybody. Have not members. We do have a forum.
I just want to see if I can get a call.
Okay. And for the record, can our guests state their names?
Jennifer Gage.
Evelyn Abwood.
Thank you both for coming. What street do you guys live on? Is that a family homestead or?
Yeah, my grandparents have been coming, they're just. Judge is gonna be in that road that we're on. But we'd like to name it Judge.
I love it.
Zine Green. Oh, thank you.
Oh, I don't know.
It might be.
Yes.
Who is? A major.
Now, by any chance, are you related to John Judge? He was formerly from Woodbury? He's a pretty amazing guy. We helped him out, a retirement party, retire from Sikorski. Well, I don't, he still works for Sikorski's because Sikorski's won't let him retire, I think.
Then you gave him the retirement party. He's still working.
Well, he's, he's not, he's a consultant. I guess you don't retire once you have certain clearance from Sikorski's. Like, I don't think you're allowed to retire. Consider you a consultant forever. But one of the most amazing careers, and I think that he spilled the beans on a couple of things, probably shouldn't have told us about, but how the things that he was involved with. It's just amazing that people right here next to us have this kind of experience. It's pretty cool. So thank you. You wanna tell everybody why you're here tonight?
Okay, well, I guess we have the bat, yeah. We got bats. And we have 16-plus bats.
Yeah.
They come out every night and eat every little insect that we don't want.
Perfect. And so we can have the next meeting at your house tonight?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and you guys had a special delivery of this bat house.
Somebody will come and tell us where it was located. Will we put it on the barn? Is that far enough away from the house?
On the town website, like the north and south net. Right, Erin?
On the website, on the town website?
On the town website is here.
I don't know. That was before my time.
Have you treated it or is it?
I think it's a really powerful, that's the fact.
Well, it's great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I sent you an email about it. If you want, I'll come by with my, we will go over it. Okay, great.
Because we're pretty busy up at the barn. There's, there's already this group that's in the group.
Oh, yeah.
They've been coming back for.
That'd be great, yeah.
And it's funny, I rarely see them in, it's my.
Yeah, I don't know how far, we don't know how far they're.
We're neighbors, by the way.
Yeah. They're all in their barns.
Apparently, I'm on former, I have two driveways, well, particularly one former, that's my.
Well, apparently, your bugs are in Stacy's.
Well, but our bats have been there since the 30s.
I mean, they used to be in the barn.
So we're just lucky they haven't gotten a white nose or any of the other. Which is great that they put these meshes over all of those caves. So I'm figuring they go to mine hill every winter. I don't have no idea, but, but they're only here until like mid-August, and then they're gone. Yeah, they don't, they don't stay. Super good.
No, no falling in the woods. No. But they come back?
They come back.
So we're gonna have the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minute from the June 9?
I made the motion.
All right, any, do I hear a second? Second? All right. If you were in person now, we have.
I know.
Any conversation? And, all right, everybody in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, so that has passed. Any additions to the agenda? We have one addition, and that is, we're gonna, as a group, doesn't have to necessarily be tonight, you, our guests are welcome to present, is we're gonna look for questions to ask the folks that are running for selection. All of us that are running for selection, because there's people running for first and second, and we think that as a committee, we should have questions. And if people have individual questions, that's fine too, but as a committee, I think that's a very important part, responsibility that we can have for the town. Any other new business to discuss? Bat house update and winner, so we already met our winners for tonight. Well, just to let you know, we are, and another reason that Teresa.
Teresa.
Teresa is here tonight is because we're gonna try to do some really fun stuff at the library, one of which is to make in town, probably not gonna smell as cedary as that one, but to make bat houses that we can give out to the population and have like a community build. So we'd love for you to be part of that, one that happens. And if you know anybody who has a bunch of cedar hanging around, that would be helpful.
Well, we have a tree that's in our lawn.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna be able to build. I was thinking of just some sparrows. The nice thing about, one of the, one of the reasons why the bat project was a good project for us is because there's a lot of small pieces, raptors, that we can, we can build.
Yeah. Go to the lundy yard, that sometimes happens.
It has to be in the theater?
No.
Because we are doing some remodeling and changing the whole roof and stuff.
Well, the nice part about cedar is that it will, of weather itself.
Yeah.
It doesn't rot. It lasts a long time.
I think the deep old, the, the farm, Topland Farm, I think they have a wood, what do you call it?
Mill.
A mill, yeah. Because they have like a heater, a shingle making machine, and they have a bunch of.
That's true.
So if they had a cedar tree, they.
I think they would definitely bone if it was something like this.
So one of the things that, one of the reasons that we're staying hybrid is because we want to have as many, a lot of people have come to us and said, hey, I don't know if I wanna be a board member, but I'm interested in conservation. So this, what we're trying to spread is that you don't need to be a board member. You wanna be a board member, but rate the clock would be fair. Many hands make a light work. However, a lot of times, to be able to come to a meeting and participate as a volunteer, you know, when we, we could have more events, we have more people, people around, then we can make more of an impact. So, and it's a great way to learn about some pretty interesting things. And so we always invite you back the second Monday of every month. Same bat place, same bat channel. All right, so we will continue to move on. So we have some old business. When did we have Teresa on?
She's under new business, but we'll skip around.
Yeah, let's do, in case Teresa wasn't planning this. Wasn't planning this day for the entire day, doesn't wanna know about the CPAS report.
That sounds exciting.
It is.
Great.
We'll let you do it first. We're gonna start with you. And so we have Teresa from the library. First of all, on behalf of the Conservation Committee, thank you for so much for what you do at the library and the communication. I think it's one of the best communications in town.
Well, that's good. Thanks.
And we want to be part of that as much as we can. We want you to communicate what we're doing, and we wanna also help communicate what you do and potentially do some things together. So, yeah, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and?
Yeah, well, again, thanks to the Conservation Commission for continuing to let the library use your lovely Joey's Trail for our story walks. Those have been going on throughout the summer, and they've been still a big hit. So there's a couple of things that I wanted, and there's the bat house thing too, that we need to talk about, but from the library side, just a couple of things actually about Joey's Trail that I wanted to bring up. The first one's kind of boring, and I mentioned it to Erin in passing the other day, but I don't know if there's anyone that's kind of doing any maintenance on the trail, but it could use a little, a little trimming. It's getting a little overgrown. Nothing major, but, you know, there's still a path, but it could use a little weed racking or something.
Definitely. I loved it. Definitely. It's in pretty good shape, better than I thought.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not bad.
With all the spray, all the vegetation.
It's gone crazy. And it's mostly on one side, that's the library side of the trail where it's not overgrown. But I do, like I was telling Erin, I see people using it every day. You know, neighbors across the street, and people walking their dogs, and I saw some random girl sitting on the fridge the other day. I don't know where she was. I use it every day, at least once a day. So, yeah. Just so you know, it is appreciated, and a lot of people are using it. Also, in the same vein of Joey's Trail, last year, I know there's been a lot of change on this commission, but many of you were a part of last year. We did our Halloween story walk on Joey's Trail where we haunted the trail in a very kid-friendly way with lights and sound effects and stuff like that. And then, in an effort to do something that was COVID-friendly for Halloween, this was when like literally everything was canceled. And everybody loved it. I just heard rave reviews from all the kids and all the parents, how much they loved going through the woods at night. We had a story about nocturnal animals along the trail, and we have like animal sounds and spooky music, and everything was lit up. And, yeah, fog machines, all kinds of stuff. It was, it was a lot of fun. Your candy at the end.
Do that again?
I'm hoping we can do it again this year. In fact, last year, from the Conservation Commission, we had a little bit of, you know, $300 to spend on different equipment, like all the lights and a lot of the, you guys, so you guys have these floodlights, and you have a fog machine. It's all at the library. It's all in a box altogether. But you guys have a lot of this stuff already to do this, and I'm hoping we can do it again this year.
Well, we can probably make a commitment. We do have a forum here. We have to give a week's, do we have to give a month's notice to make a motion? Not, right? But we can make a motion. Does anyone even wanna have a motion to make a committal to the Joey's Trail haunted walk?
I do. I wanna make a very emotional, it was just a wonderful event. I wanna make a motion that we participate in Joey's Trail, our story walk.
Right.
Again, because it was so successful and beautiful. I wanted people.
Tony, did I see your hand going up?
I'll second.
Tony will second. And any conversation? All right, without hearing any conversation, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, so we have passed. So you officially have a commitment.
Okay.
So when you, as you start the planning, please reach out to us, and we will find a, I'm sure we can find a volunteer to be a liaison with you.
Great, okay.
And we'll figure out what else you need and check out what the budget, we have some budget left.
Well, we have the money from the Weiner grant, which was actually, you know, targeted for the Joey's Trail. For Joey's, and I don't see why we couldn't use some of that money to do the maintenance on the trail.
Well, if we need to, you know, we might be able to do it as a volunteer workday.
Well, that, you know, if so many, if I find volunteers who are gonna let and do trail work, I think it's gonna be difficult to maintain the trail.
Well, we'll give it a college try, and if not, then we can bring it up in July. Let's go between now and July, and then, I mean, now in August, and if August doesn't happen, then we can.
Teresa, what kind, Tom, what kind of equipment do you think we need to clear the trail? It prunes or weed whackers?
Probably prunes. I don't know if you need weed whackers, but.
I think mostly just weed whack. I guess it depends kind of on what you guys wanna do.
And add some mulch, yeah.
In some areas, more mulch would be good.
And let it hang, wait again.
Yeah. I think just really cutting it back, I don't, I, I don't really know enough to say if there's like bad stuff that needs, I mean, there's definitely bad stuff on the trail, but, that like really needs to get pulled out and gotten rid of. I mean, just to keep the path clear, I don't think it would take that much trouble.
It was, it was really, well, when I, I expected it to be much worse.
I had a little hand saw, and I cut down a tree that fell after one of the storms. I left the library in the middle of the day. What are you gonna go to? Talk about a tree.
I think a work, I think a call to action for work, and if no one shows up, then we.
Well, I think you're gonna need some supervisionists to, you know, somebody's gonna tell whoever shows up what to do, and I don't think you can just let a bunch of people loose on it.
Well, you can't let a land of people loose on it, because they'll cut down anything that.
Yeah.
Well, I, no.
Right, there's special plants there too.
But the, I was in Iran when we were originally done, originally put together.
Well, we had a trail cleaning club. We were out there cutting brambles and clearing the path. It was a lot of us.
Somebody designed it.
Oh, yeah, Gary Simon, and who's the, the art.
Did it prove to me?
No, it was Kurtz, Kurt Smith, Kurt Smith in the layout.
Okay.
And then I don't know who designed the bridge. Trudy is still in this country. She's leading. Did she give you all her extension cards?
She did. For Halloween.
So maybe she could pick it up in this place.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
I've got all the, she also put together a scavenger hunt on Joey's Trail, like, look for these plants, look for these animals. I have all that stuff at the library. But I, I think it's.
It's pretty obvious what we can do.
It's mostly just cutting back unless you wanna start getting into stuff that probably wasn't even done in the first place, like pulling out invasive stuff.
Yeah, there are, there are invasions. One ended it, you know.
We gotta see if we can get Tova. Tova, we gotta get you down to Joey's Trail.
Actually, Tova would be a great resource.
Yeah, she just, she might be on a call or something.
Oh, sure.
So we'll get back there, but we can definitely do that. Are there anything else that's going on at the library right now that you'd like the, make sure we know about?
Trying to think if there's anything that's like definitely conservation. I, no, I mean, it's been great having the trail back there, and I'm mostly looking forward to more story walks and another very fun Halloween, which, just to put it out there, we, last year, we did it in mid-October, which I would probably aim for again. I think the Saturday before Halloween is always like a very busy Saturday with all kinds of stuff going on. So I would think like the third Saturday would probably be a good day to do it.
So, but you know, every Monday there's this vegan weed.
Yeah.
Kids.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Summer, summer is so busy at the library. Yeah, so Paula, our Tovin's forecaster, does every Monday afternoon in the summer, during our summer reading program. She has the, she does like a kid's story time over at the Community Garden, which is water, weed, harvest, read. And the goal of it is to have the kids, you know, she picks a topic, whether it's like bug hotel or compost or worms, whatever it is. And she brings books and stories kind of on that topic, and the kids, in theory, weed.
Yeah, definitely in theory.
In theory. They also in theory water. Usually what happens is they end up eating a lot of the stuff that's growing and, you know, running around. But it's all of good intention. So, yeah, that's been going on. It's been a little bit hard this year just because the way Mondays have fallen and then Paula's schedule too. So we missed a few weeks in a row. We've had tons of rain. We had, we had a big turnout this week on Monday. A ton of kids were over there, and they actually did a lot of good reading. It's great. But it's, as a whole, I mean, we like being over there and participating, but the garden as a whole is like, is too much, definitely too much for us, but.
So on that note, I had talked to Jessica about the community garden and everything. I'm volunteering some, some of my time to go there and weed. I asked her for, and Paula, for a layout of what is there, because I went there, I looked around, and I'm like, what the heck is that? And, you know, who's in there and what's that? So when I go there, I'm gonna, you know, like, take the layout that she had given me, like, bed A and all that, and write down what is in there and things like that, that way. Because I, I, there was cucumbers with beans and.
Yeah.
There's no trellis and, you know, so I just wanna go there. I'm thinking Friday evenings I'm available, so I'll be going there to kind of.
Okay.
But I didn't know where to put the weeds. I don't know, you know, you just have that one compost bin. So I think Jessica and Paula are kind of gonna get back, you know, we're, I don't wanna dump it on property. And I don't wanna take it with my jungle of weeds as well. So, yeah, so I'm volunteering some.
Great, thank you.
Some of that weed, you know, make it easier for the kiddos to run out.
Yeah, it's, it's a little crazy. I think part of the problem is that there's just, there's not really leadership over there, so there's a lot of people that are lending a hand, but there's no one that's kind of like taking, taking charge and, you know. We know we're all so busy with our own gardens. It's hard to get people to go work on another one.
Mending, there's cedar rabbit in there, so.
Yeah.
My husband's on, my muscle on my, my little harness, so he, he says he'll go there and keep a look at it.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. And we had Philippe Burke. He really did a lot last year and the year before in putting things together. But they have since moved to Washington. So you still, you still doing some stuff? I think he's still actually running the Community Garden Facebook page, I think. So he's still around, but.
Yeah, I'm new to it. So Facebook page, okay, don't look forward. Yeah.
So, and I was thinking, I didn't actually, I saw one of the, a layout that someone had put together, and it, and it, on there was labeled the Meyer Memorial Library Herb Garden, and I said, oh, I guess we have the herb garden.
You do.
Well, I think it's all mint.
Yeah, it wasn't like.
We're not getting rid of it now.
Also, I was thinking, I can do this myself, but at the end of the season, I. We got, well, we got a bunch, yeah. We got a bunch of herbs and other stuff from a friend of mine in Washington, but there was like, we didn't plant it in the mint bed because why? My mother. So it's just kind of scattered around everywhere else. But I was gonna try to smother it at the end of the year, and pull out what I can, and then just like put down stuff on top of it and try to.
Yeah, because it's outside the bed now. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to eradicate, but it's also very good for keeping other bugs that you don't want away.
Yeah.
So, and it's cool, like, you can show the kids, you can plant your water and, you know.
Yeah, I made mint bean the other day.
We can pull it and give it out.
That's what Jessica said, she goes, I don't know if anyone would want that.
It's so invasive.
Red vision.
Yeah, to keep the.
Exactly.
You are kidding.
Nope.
So that's one good thing, and then I always tell people, put it in pots.
Yeah, that's a good thing. So, I mean, I'll draw what's there, you know, that way. And then maybe next year, we all can do. Everybody is busy, and you know, you have one person who loves garden planting.
Okay.
You guys have raised beds already, so.
There's like a tree growing in one of them?
Yeah.
So you guys will connect regarding?
Yeah, and Jessica as well.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. And before we let you go, we need to look at a calendar. So I kind of went back and forth in regard into the email, and we wanna look at some times a year that would be good to have this bat house that we can do in conjunction, bat house built, that we can do a conjunction with the library, and maybe we could put out some bat books and some educational information and what have you, and corral some kids. I mean, the, the, the great, the best thing to do is to have like a bunch of adults that know what they're doing, attract as many kids as possible, and that will re, a bunch of generations of the same time. I think one of the things in Roxbury is like, everything is generational. A lot of things that we do here are generational. So if we can bring all these generations together, it's for everybody's benefit and enjoyment. So August is too quick. September is beating around, you know, it is around the corner. Do you think we can do this in September? Do you guys have a full dance card already, or do we put it for the beginning of October?
I think it depends on how much you want us to do.
Help us advertise, help promote it, and then put some stuff. I mean, yeah, it would be like a nice lead-in Halloween.
Yeah, we could even pick a story that has a bat in it, for the Halloween story walk.
But like Evelyn said, that they, they fly the crows to say at a certain time, so.
Well, that, that doesn't matter.
Kids so much. Right, of course. But they're gonna wanna go put it up and, you know, and then where, why are the bat, you know, and then you can educate them. You can say, you know, what are they hiding?
Right, yeah. So they're still around.
And they're, they're mine hill. We're hoping. They don't go so far away. And they're just right there, and, you know, we build this.
We can maybe.
We build these in preparation for.
I wonder if maybe the Land Trust would wanna do something too, and have like a guide guide to the, to the bat.
They have, they have the money.
I can jump in. Why not have a whole bat?
Make a motion that we now name this Bat Bass. About everything we've talked about.
Exactly. We'll volunteer.
I have a taxidermy bat named Peaches. I mean, it's.
Peaches.
That I won at a Halloween costume contest like 10 years ago, but I'm too scared of him. He's in like a little raft, and I'm too scared to open it up and look at him, so he's just like.
My husband's not part of the Bat Bass.
Yeah, he's just like.
The mascot.
Lives in the Halloween decorations, and I just kind of like try to not open that.
So do we know, what, what is the library doing about pop-up public?
Nothing yet, at least not at the Hodge. I can't have that many people in a tiny building. That's just like.
But you had one in the backyard, right?
Yeah, yeah, we did a jazz concert with a little pub, the bar set up. And this June, and we're doing one in two weeks. and it's June, and we're doing one in two weeks.
Is that Kim Brean, because I have a patient that drove by and they were a little like off, but they want to bring the children, their kids there, and they're like, well, that looks really unsafe, so I said, I'll find out, you know, for instance, they tried to sign up for a lot of the activities at the library, and they're like, by the time we go to sign up, everything's taken, and I'm like, I know.
Well, yeah, now, now we're, we're beyond, we still have sign-ups on things, but since everything's outside for the rest of the summer, it's kind of. I mean, at the jazz concert, we had a bunch of kids that showed up later, and I gave them beach balls and they just ran around in the back.
I mean, they probably just.
But this next one, isn't this next one picture, because it's all like American culture going?
Well, I, I, it's the, the concert announcer, first chair violinist from the Waterbury Company, she and her husband do like Americana popular music on, I guess it's fiddle or electric violin, it's hard, so. I hope so.
Right.
I know, so that's, that's happening on the thirty-first.
So, do we want to look at the calendar, month of October for Bat Fest? We got a culmination of this thing.
Or do we want to wait until, you know, what a solid weekend is for the.
We don't have, we don't have anything in October. I mean.
So, ooh, the thirtieth is on a Saturday, thirty-first on Sunday.
Well, that's what people for right treats about that, that weekend, usually being really busy.
Yeah, so we, we're still, the thirty-first, there's gonna be the, there's gonna be the trick-or-treating on South Street and the the trunk-or-treat in the library parking lot, and I really love Halloween, so everything is moving to the library because I'm very willing.
So, about sixteenth or twenty-third?
I think, yeah.
Weekend though.
I think twenty-third is good.
Is that the story walk? The Bat Fest story walk?
Well, we could do the story walk on the twenty-third, and maybe we could do the bat house bill on, on, on the ninth.
I was calling this day weekend, indigenous people's day weekend.
That should work, shouldn't it, because it is the Columbus.
Right there, all staying up here.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah.
We know they're not going to New York.
Or do we want to do it on the October second? Kick off that month.
Well, how are you, well, how are you wanting to set it up? Like, are you gonna have?
Like a conveyor belt.
Conveyor belt, okay, so it's gonna be like one big day where everybody.
Well, there's, there's two ways that we could do it, and talking about it, we can either say that we can either do it so that one family builds one house beginning to end, and kind of like they follow instructions, one person leads it kind of thing, or a group, somebody leads a group, or we can do it like a conveyor belt, I kind of like the conveyor belt because then more people touch each house, and we hopefully have a surplus of houses that we can, you know, give to people who maybe weren't able to participate that day.
Yeah, okay. And special tools neither, just cameras and nails?
So, hopefully beforehand, we can have all the pieces.
If we have all the pieces, they're just, they're actually screwed in.
So, the, the idea was, we have another one of these houses, originally bought to take apart and kind of see this house and build. So, that's what we're gonna do with that one.
The pieces would be made ahead of time, it's kind of screwing up.
Yeah, and because that's, that's too dangerous to, to have any.
I think you, it doesn't look like if anything that complex, you cannot put together with a table saw.
Right. Pre drill the holes perhaps?
Yeah.
They're, they're pre drilled, yeah.
Yeah, and then the hook on the back.
So, we'll take a lot of prep work though.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look for, we'll look for a couple of folks in town who really enjoy this stuff, and we'll volunteer to prep all of them. So, do we want to turn this into that month?
That month. I know, that girl, I can.
If we do, if like the second weekend, we can see the speaker to come in and do another weekend for Halloween, and just do like a lecture on that, so maybe like what more.
We have the kids to draw bats or paper mache, because he doesn't love paper mache, you know? Couple of local artists, the Pauls would turn around and weld something.
And Jessica and someone sculpting.
Yeah, we'll sculpt something.
Maybe can make the wire and they could put the paper mache on the bat.
That'd be cool.
Now that Halloween.
Hawk Ridge, Hawk Ridge has that beautiful hawk, we can have a giant bat.
Oh, my gosh.
And we can have my friend from Hawk Ridge.
Oh, there you go.
Bat juice. All right.
So many good things we can do.
Bat month will kick off with a bat house bill on October second. Uh, it will have its haunted trail on the twenty-third, and we'll do something with you guys on the thirtieth or thirty-first, whatever day you guys do your thing, we'll kick in with the library.
Okay, well, I mean, you guys want to do a, have a.
A booth?
A booth.
We'll have a booth.
A trunk.
So then we have the, the weekend on the ninth and the sixteenth, we could have somebody do a speaker.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out and contact DC.
And, and if we can think of something else, I mean, we're never talking about it, you have any ideas? We got one more?
Uh, yeah.
Ooh, the hike to the Land Trust, here we go. Oh. With vodka. And, with Mind Held Distillery.
Oh, you're so funny, I thought you said no.
No. All right, so enough about the bat. Um, so that's awesome, I think that would be a lot of fun, so that month, bat-a-aloosa, we have a. All right, so it's seven forty-one, we do have to move along with the agenda, you guys are more than welcome to stay, and they get less exciting now.
I'm gonna leave Walt in there.
You're on the high note, everybody, thank you so much, and remember, the minutes are always posted online, so if you want to stop by, we'd love to have you here, and say where we're gonna meet, and then if you want to chime in and go in the background on Zoom, you can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys, do you mind getting another picture?
A what?
A picture?
Oh, a picture?
Yeah, we're trying to be Instagrammable.
Well, no, you're the winner.
Okay. Oh, you're good, I'm just, unless you want to get in. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Were you at the, the garage sale?
Well, they, they was inclusive, so now it's Halloween.
Juice very nice, I can, I can do that. Oh, you know what, I'll write up a little flirt, and I'll put the October Bat Month in there.
Yeah, some people already actually became that, or that. Okay, so on to the next piece of business, that's the business. Um, do we, did you put in Kathy's piece?
I did, it's under her business.
Education Committee Proposal, okay, so while we were doing new business, let's continue on with new business, the Education Committee Proposal, did everybody have a chance to take a look at? Okay, Kathy, you want to say a few words about it?
Okay, it's basically, it's the formation of a very simplistic community, I'll be the liaison to the Conservation Commission, and Ron Thanis, who knows everybody, would just, you know, wants doing this, and just setting things up. Did anybody see the biological thing about the vaccines, you know, the vaccinations were done on the Zoom programs? He was responsible for getting those people involved, so he just knows everybody, so anyway, the idea is to create these programs in, in conjunction with, if you call it, with the STEM program, with the boot, preschool, with Joe Estrel kind of district, on educational projects, and bringing in speakers, working with the library, and all this will be done under the Conservation Commission, so any proposals for any programs, I'll bring them to the Conservation Commission, we'll discuss all of them, and, and vote to see whether or not.
Why do you think we need a committee for that? Why can't these, these ideas be brought to the committee as they are, as they come up?
Well, they will be brought to the committee, they'll be brought.
Uh, he meant the commission, he meant the commi.
Yeah, why can't they be brought to the, if, if, anybody in town who has an idea, then bring it to us.
Oh, anybody can do that, but this is just, uh, this is a committee where basically we can use Ron's talents and in the background to bring work into our business.
But why can't we use Ron's talents directly?
Like, why do we have to form a committee for him to participate? That's an awkward question, yes, let me see how I can phrase that, for feelings perhaps?
So, but the, this is, it's a very awkward thing, because saying we're gonna act on behalf of the Conservation Day, we'll welcome Ron back here and any ideas that before, that he has with, with open arms, but, and looking over the idea to create a committee for this subset of work, so he can work on an island on his own, I know that I'm on, I, I, I don't see the value of it to the commission and the president that it sets.
Well, I think I see the value to the town, just as a resource here, that we can tap into, and it'll be under our ioc, and the benefits of the kids, the town's people, everybody can participate in it, I just think it's a good way.
So you're saying he won't bring these great ideas to us unless he can do it on his own?
Or through you.
No, it's, it's through the Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission is the overriding.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, Conservation Commission already exists.
And has control over.
Right. I, I think if you invited him to a meeting, to, you know, discuss his ideas, he'd come, he'd be happy to do that, and make things happen.
Well, you certainly could invite him to do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be for that, I, I feel a little uncomfortable, again, creating a committee to do what we do.
That, just another layer.
Yeah, there's another layer.
It is another layer, and it's not to, I don't want to get into the lines of why it's, why he's not here.
Yeah.
I don't think it's appropriate for me to make comments about that. Probably you haven't already given us the one, once, without.
Well, and he didn't want to meet on Zoom, he didn't want to meet on Zoom, now we're meeting in person. Would he be willing to come to meeting now?
I'd like to meet him.
He's an interesting man, and he's, in various moments, didn't want to be chairman of the commission to start with, but when Gary Steinman with Barbara, he didn't do that, and he's, he gets, he's kind of, you know, last, you know, just to point and so on, and and then things happened at the end of the year, and I don't want to, I don't want, again, the way that his feeling is on this, but he still wants to contribute, it's just that he just doesn't want to doesn't want to participate in person, in the commission. So, in, in other words, if, this is his way of blending a, a solution to be able to contribute to the town in a way that we have been in the past, but again, not being here in person.
Okay, again.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's.
And I'm in the middle, and I'm in the middle of this, and I don't want to say too much, but we are talking about.
Yeah, and I, I, it's horrible that he has this feeling, because I think a lot of them have to revolve around me, and that was never my invention.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying. I'm, I think it was more situational.
Yeah.
More situational.
Definitely, so, you know, it's, it, it is what it's, you know, I'm gonna take Tony's recommendation to reach out then and invite him to a meeting, there's a couple of things that we have just clearly err on, I think, as we, in our last meeting, we had discussed what I was going to do in regards to reaching out to Ron, and there's something happened and something came to my knowledge after our last meeting, that don't need to be brought up today. We want to talk meeting privately, this is a publicly recorded meeting, but that kind of makes me cautious about creating a committee like that. Again, any idea should be brought up to us, and we can talk about it in open forum, and we can make decisions like we did tonight, have a lot of fun with it, and move on, get some stuff done.
Yeah, I'd love to meet him as a new member, I'm, I feel like, you know, I'm like, what the heck, you know, apparently he's a part of town, you know, and so I would, yeah, I mean.
I'm, I'm missing out.
Yeah.
But we're gonna do it on, we're gonna do it on the commission's terms, so hopefully we can work with the public commission, not my terms, our terms, and not just on one person's terms.
Well, I hope we can have a discussion and talk about how we make deals about this.
Sure.
Aaron, how do you feel about it?
Uh, honestly, when I read your proposal, I thought it read exactly like our mission statement, so to me. It felt redundant and unnecessary to me, I feel, I feel that if Ron had these ideas, and as I said, he'd be bringing them to the commission, but he doesn't need to act on his own or through a single person on the commission. You know, we're, we're here for the public, we're here for the town, and so if there's something that he wants to be done, he can bring that to us, but I, I don't feel as though it may be in an appropriate way, and I don't think it's a necessary way that that needs to happen.
So, you're not sure, right?
I'm not sure, yeah, I mean, I, like, I read your proposal as well, I, I would love to hear ideas, and I feel like anybody in the public can bring ideas, like, I don't, I don't have those, you know, those feelings that here last year, I don't know what, how, you know, like, so I think you need to reach out, like, when I go, like, when you were saying, you know, like, at least, you know, extend an olive branch and see, I hate that you're in the middle of it, you know, that's, that's putting you in an awkward position. You're just trying to help the kids, you're trying to, you know, and like.
Yeah, I see it as a win-win.
You know, I'm just too, you know, I just feel I can't afford that type of a thing.
Well, actually, we want to, you know, utilize his, his talents.
And recognize him, you know.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't know how to deal with it, you know, he just may not want to come.
Yeah.
And he can still bring those ideas to you, just having him act on behalf of the commission is, again, if the president that it sets is not appropriate, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
What, what are you saying, that it would be just an, another layer?
Well, there's another layer that he would actually be, at, at a certain point, he'd be acting off the fact.
Yeah.
Only with the commission's approval, this is not an independent committee, this is definitely a subcommittee, the way it's structured, it's definitely a subcommittee of the Conservation.
So normally, when you create.
So nothing would happen when that is discussed?
He'd keep you off on his own, saying this stuff, but then it's.
Well, he wouldn't be setting up, he would compose it.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, but then it's gotta come back to the commission for approval, so who does that? Is Ron doing it?
No, I do, because I don't want to be.
Again, this is another layer of.
So, what you, you can extend the olive branch, I think that's a wonderful idea, extend the olive branch, I like that very, very much, and if it could come from you, that would be, that would be phenomenal, and perhaps, and I'd love to see him in that army commission, but I just think he has a lot to offer, and I understand what you're saying, and I don't want to lose this town's silence, but I like, I like this suggestion, I think that's another thing.
We'll do that, and, and you know what, we have a very dedicated event to test this out on, which, which is the, you know, bat-a-aloosa.
Yeah.
They can say it.
He can bring in.
His his ideas and thoughts for that and maybe that'll be enough to to bring him back in. Again, it doesn't have, just like anybody in town, we wanna try to attract people to um to our meetings so that, again, many people are gonna have many different ideas and many different talents and many different contacts.
Involved it.
Maybe he will wanna come in here as a volunteer so that when he it's in his schedule.
Yeah, this is kind of an in the background volunteer kind of thing. He still wants to volunteer, he still wants to sustain.
No.
See these programs happen, that it gives the benefit to the town and mostly to the kids. Really, it's, and you know, what what he's proposed is basically in that these Joey's Trail programs in conjunction with the.
Yeah, Ron really.
He loves it and working with that should all be, you know, all that stuff. So if we can work out something somehow to utilize his talent, I think everybody's gonna.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Um so with that, any further conversation on the formation of an education committee, the education committee proposal?
Let's just understand that you're reaching out to Ron.
I'm gonna reach out to Ron and make it an olive branch. Hopefully he comes back. Um at this point, we're not supporting, well, again, we I'm clarifying that we're not supporting the idea of the creation of a.
We're not, we're not gonna move ahead with forming a committee, but we're gonna move ahead with trying to.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That's the way we have to go on, or.
I don't think we have to go on, we don't have to go on.
That's fine, I just.
So it's smooth to me like this is a topic that is, has been on the agenda today and will be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Right, yes.
Well, again, it's not a topic uh.
Or it's just, or there'll be old business.
It's, it's hopefully he just shows up. If he doesn't show up and he doesn't give you any ideas, I don't know.
Well, then I think you have to think of something else. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we do nothing at that point, but I I think there could be some alternatives.
Take a motion to to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, and if you wanna vote on it right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
No, I I let's, I don't think we should plant all the contingency if he doesn't come.
Yeah, let's just hope that he comes.
Let's hope that he comes. If he doesn't come, then we'll replan and figure out.
Because committees are for tasks, for this project. It's not for everything. So, you know, you had said something uh at one of the original meetings about, oh, since this, since we're gonna be run by committee. Not projects are like, we're not supposed to do all the work. Of course, we're taught to bring all the people on to do the work. Um, our job is to facilitate it. All right, so we have five minutes to go over the rest of this stuff and and but one of the things I will say, one of the I'm gonna have Ron reach out because we've spent a lot of time talking about Ron over the months. So hopefully he can participate and uh help us facilitate one hour of the. Right? Uh CPES, what is it?
CPES, um, I spoke to uh uh the Green Bank and I figured out how the program works. Um and it it might work for often. Basically, here's here's a way to work. Uh either a town business, which would be a property owner in town, or a church, church's ballpark. Uh would be, would if they were to have an interest in um doing an energy upgrade to uh to convert uh the more renewable energy, energy savings. Then uh they would initiate a uh sort of an audit of of their property. Somebody would come out, make recommendations for what they could do, um tell them what it would, what it would cost. Um and there are contractors out there who can uh give you a pretty good idea of this, this sort, this sort of energy, an energy upgrade that's being proposed would would have a payback. So a a specific example, let's say a church wants to put in solar panels on their roof and they wanna change their heating system through heat pumps and uh they wanna do some other. Uh they would give them the total cost of that and calculate the energy savings. Uh then this person would contact the Green Bank, fill out some paperwork. And the Green Bank would then do a more thorough audit to see if there would really be a true payback. If there is, Green Bank would provide the money to do the upgrade.
Hmm.
So the the homeowner wouldn't, the the property owner wouldn't have to show anything out. Um then the work would get done. Uh and the only way it gets done is if the Green Bank can prove that uh there is a payback. That including the cost of capital, that it would be returned sufficient to pay back the loan uh at uh within in with interest in, you know, cover the work. Uh and the the loan, the term of the loan would be as long as the 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 use of the life of the upgrade. So since the solar panels have its one year life, then the loan would be one year. The um the property owner would would have to pay back the loan to Green Bank. And that loan would be uh it would look like it's coming out of their property tax bill, but it really isn't. What would happen is the Green Bank would send them bi-annual statements or bi-annual bills timed exactly for their uh property tax. The property owner conceivably would come out ahead because the money they're paying for the loan would be more than covered by the energy savings. Uh so it conceivable that um it could work for the few businesses we have in Roxbury, the property. Um we'd have to contact them and the churches. Uh it would take uh a vote by the first selectmen's office to 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 allow this thing to happen. Uh but if they were to approve it, if the selectmen's office, if the town approves it, then we could uh go ahead and inform property owners that this program is available. If they're interested, this is what they need to do.
So the i- if there's an interest bearing loan announced.
It's an interest bearing loan and it is about something, you know, maybe it could be about five percent, but uh the terms of the loan are different than a normal, let's say, mortgage. Um the um the the loan is transferable, so if the property owner sells the property, the loan is transferred to the new owner.
So the to make clear, the this organization is a public-private partnership, so part of the program which is dedicated to trying to promote uh energy savings and if uh the question would be if there is far enough businesses in town that would be doing such a thing. And basically, it's an alternative way to get along. You can do this through any bank.
You you could do this, you could do this, but I mean, there are some perks when you're using the Green Bank. It doesn't, when you say, it really would only, if it only had one business that was interested in doing it.
It would be worth.
It would, it would still be doable because it's 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 really no work for us.
Right.
And it's no work for anybody. The homeowner takes the property.
The only issue with it is that the town um giving it the green light, which, by the way, the town at one point already voted yes and the Green Bank dropped the ball and they turned it off. Uh something happened.
Okay, whatever happened.
Whatever happened.
They were, when I spoke to them, they were totally supportive.
The town or the Green Bank?
Green Bank, right. Yeah, they they put me on a conference call with with other people who were more knowledgeable about it than the person I initially contacted.
Right, so the issue is is um that it would basically have, which is okay. But it it would basically give permission for them to directly solicit anybody who's considered. So the uh one of the recommendations was to to reach out to the business owners, not that many.
Well, I.
Business owners in town.
I would think it would be fewer than you think because it's not just business, it wouldn't be the business owner, it would be the property owner. And I think probably the property owners, uh there maybe are two or three because there are only two commercial areas in town, right? I mean, I'm, there could be, I I'm thinking Maple Bank.
Yeah.
Then the the all the buildings by the Roxbury Market, that's where you all.
I have a farm.
Yeah, a farmer's farm too, yeah.
So so the idea was, and if we want to to pursue this, we'd be to reach out to the businesses in town, farms included, churches included. Get them in town hall, have them hear about it and see if anybody's interested before we basically gave uh Green Bank the okay to solicit on the half of town. Because that that's one of the things that they're known to do. Is once they get the green light, they they hound you down.
I I didn't get that impression.
Well, that's, that's one of the things, which is okay because they're offering a benefit. Uh most people wanna do this today to get loans, actually have a loan.
Very clever.
And what's the benefit of this?
What, there's no, I'm not gonna say that. That's what I'm saying, public-private partnership. But at the end of the day, when we push them, they're a lending institution. They're not a public, there's no grant, there's no saving, no nothing. It's the same thing as a a solar company that does. But it's not about.
So it's public, it's private, the public and it's public and private. So the public aspect of it is um the department of.
I think it's from the that actually supports.
So they they support it because it's 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 clean energy, clean green energy. So they have involved private investors, right?
So the the company itself is a private for-profit company.
And the public.
Yeah.
I wonder who's got this back.
Well, the 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 there's private capital and these people wanna make a determined investment just like you.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering who um if it's a quasi-public, then uh I wonder if these savings actually involve the company. Yeah, public market, just that.
I don't know.
Because if they're doing audits for these business property uh companies and uh.
I I I get what you're saying, but what's the what's the benefit? I mean, what 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 difference does it make as far as the business?
Um I'm just, I'm just wondering whether or not the energy audits are, you know, are on the basis of, you know, trying to create business for lenders or.
Well, again, it's it's a program that's out there that some of our, again, if if two people want the benefit from it. You know, that maybe couldn't refinance their personal property at two point seven five percent and they wanna say, or or maybe they don't have any more lending ability on their property and they wanted to go ahead and get five percent.
Yeah, I I I I question whether these people, if you had, if you have a mortgage on your property, whether they can get a very favorable loan because most of the banks are, they won't allow their mortgages to be subordinate to any other one. So a new loan has to be subordinate to bank law and if that's the case, then the lender's probably gonna want to charge a higher rate to cover that risk.
Hmm.
Uh but again, I mean, it's, I'm not a business owner right now. Uh I I think I don't wanna speak for that. I think that if we wanna bring this, if we wanna organize something, we would have the business owners come in the room and here, I think we should do that. Uh turning it on so that they can be used directly, I don't know, one of the things about Roxbury that's beautiful is that we don't get harassed about a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are your thoughts on that?
I don't know. I think, you know, it's kind of figured out, if you wanted to do this, how do you get the worry out of the business owners?
Can we do with the other short little things with Barbara email loss?
Or we can put it in the Roxbury.
In the newsletter?
Yeah.
We could do something like that. Uh.
Are we being asked to support this?
We're asking, looking for it.
We've been asked to look into it, perhaps.
Someone for the Green Bank?
Yeah.
Suppose.
We wanna do that. Looking at the clock. Just wondering what I'm doing. And when we have an hour, we got a lot of stuff that we wanna do. I mean, how many hours do you spend on it? I spend an hour on all of it.
Yeah, I spent, I spent an hour and a half.
It's standard.
Unless reading that large.
I don't think we need to bring it to the whole commission. The whole point is, you have somebody, you pass them, they go ahead and and bring it back.
It, you know, cause, does Borma have any?
He actually gave me a person that's been hounding her.
Okay.
To reach out, but please find out why.
Is he in agreement?
He was until just last week, uh Friday, the twelfth day.
Oh, because it, I mean, the.
Let's talk about the twelfth one.
Okay.
But let's let's talk about it more because, again, if we're going to continue with it, we just have to see what the value is. And again, we did our research. It's there, it exists. I don't know what.
We're we're not gonna be. Sure, if I, if there was one piece of information that I could magically add, we'd be, you know, talking to the, talking to these property owners and saying, Pete, is this something you'd be interested in doing? And you make it, if you get a flat-out no from everybody, then what's the point?
Uh would you want me to do like a word? We could do it, but soon they won't be saying to the businesses and things, churches and everything to say, you know, what's something that you'd be interested in?
Yeah, do you, do you have contact information on business owners?
The property owners. How are you get that?
All right.
I have a lot of them in the.
It's the property owners, not the business owners, because you, you know, they're gonna say, I don't own the building, so it doesn't make any.
They can talk to them.
Okay, yeah.
Well, come on.
Yeah.
The other two people.
Who's that now?
And the other, there's probably two businesses that where they don't own the.
Yeah.
Property, the rest of them are on on home.
Yeah, but I think like the liquor store and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's like it's one property.
Yeah, I know who that is.
He's what?
I already talked to him.
Okay, so you're.
Oh, really? Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, he said, hey, you know, it's just. And by the way, he, you know, he's also for a store, it's just that we've got a whole nother.
And it can't be right, that's a whole nother can of worms.
You know, like old, like Mine Hill, even if they wanted to, they probably didn't.
Well, aren't we just being put out of work, like a short tweet about it and say, if interested, contact the Conservation Commission? And that way we're not like, you know what I mean, like we're not.
Okay.
If if people are interested enough, they'll contact us.
Okay.
But you're not using anybody's individual, it looks like using that rock seeking conservation.
Yes.
All right. And then if there is, then we can go ahead and continue with it.
You want to do a quick thing on bottles again?
Please.
Quick.
Now they're talking about bottles.
This this quick, it's it's really interesting. Jessica did a ton of work. I get it. I'm only the messenger. She did like all the liquor. Uh so it it's very interesting because the reason that the five cent thing got discontinued, did you hear this?
Yeah, I told you that.
You you weren't exactly right.
I I repeated without.
Okay, yeah, the the reason, it was initially COVID related.
Right.
So it was COVID related, so they stopped the five cent thing, the company hauling the stuff away, didn't wanna do it anymore, COVID.
Because it's it's better than the uh.
COVID, because it happened just when COVID was was there, okay. Then, when uh the company that was hauling away our stuff on Mira, uh which is no longer the company doing it, when Mira found out that all those nickel bottles and cans were going into the regular recycling bin, they said, wow, this is a revenue stream. We're not letting you guys go back to the five cent. So they couldn't do it. Then uh the town negotiated a deal with, they dropped uh Mira and got the HRA, Houstonic Resource Recovery Center. They're the people that are now gonna haul away that stuff. And um Barbara lined up this company to haul away the five cent thing, so that's back on, if you saw it in the last email.
I saw it in the last email, but I thought it was like news to come. I mean, is it, can we bring it to to the dump or are we?
No, not yet. I went there yesterday and there was no reception before. Uh now it, I talked to Albert about it and so did Jessica and he just went bonkers. He's like, I mean, I don't, I don't even know if we should get involved here because he and Barbara were like clashing. He says, I'm not doing it. He said, I, and Barbara said, you know, from Jessica's telling me, well, he said, yeah, he's gotta do it.
I mean, he's not his dump, not for it.
I know. He wants help. He said, I cannot do this without getting help.
Mm-hmm. All right. Just pull it back.
So go talk to him, he'll tell you.
We'll find out. So what, how did that?
I talked to him, he said, I I, he said, it's a lot of work. He said that they're not sorted properly. Bottles go in with the cans and the cans move with the plastic. He said, I have to lift these heavy things up. I already had a hernia. Uh he just went on and on and he's really against it. And he said, he he doesn't have, he said, two days a week, he's the only one there. So he said.
Well, let's, let's get more information, but something's happened.
Something's happening. I would just wait and see what happens because there's another layer on this and that is that the uh HRA now wants, I believe, wants glass separated out from the glass.
Yeah.
So there's a. So there's another pin.
Yeah, I just read that in Barbara's email.
Okay.
Yeah, she says glass and the five cents.
Right, so the glass, you know, has to burn a separate one, glass gets to go in another one. And then there's the recyclables, which, um.
Who collects the five cents? Who?
Okay, there's, there's a company, uh, and I spoke to Judy about this, there's a company that hauls it away. They come, they haul it away, and they pay, um, I thought it was, I thought it was told it was four cents for every positive bottle or can. Uh, Albert told me, no, it's three cents. And then Judy or Jessica told me that she spoke to Judy, and Judy said, no, 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 or she spoke to Kim Barrett. Kim said, no, it doesn't work that way. They just sent us a check and she's not sure how they. But, um, I I think it generated like $5,000 this year. And that money, yeah, that money goes into some fuel fund. And I don't know how it gets distributed to the needy people. Albert had some very negative view of who who's getting the money. So I didn't want to, I mean, he just went nuts when I brought this up.
All right, well, something's happening.
Something's happening. I don't know if we want to get a dog in the spike because we're just going to, you know.
Well, again, to us, it's just that we're cycling the path. I mean, that's the most important.
It's just happening all the way.
And we can help support the fuel bank.
Yeah, so the only thing that Jessica suggested is, um, maybe try to get, um, like, high school kids doing community service to go up there Tuesdays and Wednesdays, four hours in the afternoon, and help them out.
We can, we'll we'll figure it out.
I mean, that doesn't seem like it's it's eight hours, eight man-hours a week.
Now that we know that the company has changed and we can do this again, we we can work the problem. You know, that's a workable problem.
So anyway, that's what Jessica sent me. That's what I was saying, that was a good idea. And she's also looking, she she knows people at, um, HRA. And, um, she's putting together a, um, little recycling brochure which tells you what, and what can and what cannot get recycled. They have a great website, an interactive program there where you can type in the thing you're not sure of, and it'll tell you, goes in trash, goes in recycle, goes wherever. I mean, you can type in some bizarre things.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Resource, H R R A dot org.
Yeah.
Usatonic Resources Recovery Authority.
That might be something for the U box, just to put in that you can question about maybe second.
Uh, before we do that, definitely the topic that Jessica would be plus, um, she mentioned, she said she wasn't sure it was all totally accurate.
Oh.
All right.
Because I said, yeah, this great interactive website, I'm not mistaken, I think she, well, maybe it's not totally accurate, so.
We are, we're, uh, ten minutes over our hour, so let me, I just, we're going to table the 5G bill update because that's.
Yeah.
Most information, we're passionate about it. Rox.
She emailed it to me, thank you, and liked you some, so.
Give it to us in a few seconds.
The bill has passed. Uh, it is a major rollout of the 5G smart grid. It does not include local control or health and environmental considerations. Just a view.
Yeah, it was that, that would have been a very tough analogy to hold back. I just hope that they put more research into, um, what it affects of this. Like, should you, how far away should you be for the, you know, we're going to have them up on telephone poles pretty far from us, but there are people in cities, a lot of the natives that did that, some people were, they, that these are on the building that they live in and stuff like that, so. Uh, but we won't, we'll let her give us more color when she's here. Uh, Roxbury Land Trust update real quick, this is in regards to that trail for the property, the piece of town-owned property behind the dump, uh, that was the landfill before. Um, so they said that they would not, uh, they would not at this time entertain a conversation about potentially allowing us to, you know, a solar field up there and let the line go through the trail. Um, now with that, they asked if we would still, um, support their, you know, them coming to town to ask for the use of that town property anyways. And right now, if if we did that, it would close all opportunities for, um, a solar field at some point in the future there. So we got to turn over some rocks and see if there's any, what are the possibilities? So, uh, the town sends, uh, someone to be, to have a preliminary conversation in regards to this. Uh, this Santa, they used to be known as Santa Fuel.
Yeah.
Does anybody know Santa Fuel?
I know the name.
Well, then Bridgeport, that was like one of their propane companies, like suburban cocaine.
Yeah.
Or whoever you want, whoever anybody uses up here. So, um, they're getting into, they're specifically using capped land as solar field, like that's the main deal. That's a whole nother subset of, so for next month, I'll have an update in regards to what they think they can do up there. Um, and of course, if we, if there's something to do, our P and we put out, we're responsible for, we'll give other people opportunities and things like that. But, um, what we have to discuss, and hopefully only in two seconds. But do we want to scrap that idea and help Roxbury Land Trust build a trail up there? And we're going to help you convince the town to use the land? Or do we want to explore this idea of putting a solar field up there first?
Sounds new, I think it's one of the solar.
Yeah, I I don't want to, I don't want to close the door on solar. That's what, if.
If that's, that would, what it would.
Yeah, if if a green with the land trust, what do they want? They want them.
They want to use our, remember, you had the map up?
Yeah.
And so not only that land, but it'll also have the trail swoop around the capped land that the town owns currently.
Oh, the trail which swoop around the old.
Right.
Ran landfill, sorry.
Yeah. Not around, through.
Through the landfill.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're walking on the trail and you're always walking on landfill. Well, you would.
You wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know, okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't, if you walked there today, you wouldn't.
You wouldn't know. And if we did that, that would close the door on wanting any power lines.
Well, put in solar panels up if we did that.
Oh, yeah.
Put a trail up.
I see.
Let's say put a trail from there.
Well, it's better to the town if we go along with them, probably, really, isn't it?
Yeah, so, but again, we want to, so I'll respond to the land trust and say, at this time, we're still exploring uh, uses for the land for solar fields so that they have that information.
Make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I would agree with that.
Yeah, make a motion, what you just said.
Yeah, I will second.
All right, does anybody want to add further conversation on that?
The why we all can't just get along and they want a trail, we want.
Well, we talked, that was, that was the whole point of the conversation, really, it was like, hey, well, we only need X amount of land for the the solar field, but we really can't. One of the problems is get the trunk line with the green line that's cheaper.
And you're maybe worried about.
We do both.
Well, that's that's why.
They're worried about how much, you know, you're going to change the land, you know, like.
Yeah, it would be a varied line.
Right, exactly, but maybe they don't understand, you know, like, because you need a green machine, you need to dig, you need to, you know.
That's what we said, you're going to clear. You're going to clear.
Trail anyway, exactly.
But again, if they didn't want to talk about it.
Yeah.
So we just said, hey, do some discovery and then bring in some professionals, but we're not going to do that unless you guys are open to the conversation, they want to open their conversation, that, that. Maybe once we go to them and say, hey, this works behind, maybe they'll change their mind. The the perfect, the nirvana would be the, the, um, and I think that that that's the right future for us in a sense that, you know, technology and keeping Roxbury the way that it is, at some point has to.
Will give.
Yeah. Well, there's a way to go, you know, so, um, anyways, so that's that, that's the tribe Roxbury Land Trust, go ahead.
We just need like a vote on that, it was motion.
Oh, no conversation, uh, everybody in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed? Nobody standing? Uh, still there, still there. Okay, so, um, I think we hit it.
Uh, questions for the first electing candidates?
So the part of the new, uh, new business this night was, um, questions for the, so not the first electment, but everybody who's running. Do we want to collect these? So everybody email any ideas that you have to Aaron, or do we want to try to figure it out in thirty seconds? Or do we want to?
I need, I need time before we leave that.
And one of my first reaction was, why are we, why are we doing that? As a conservation commission, where did that come from?
It's just an idea, as a commission, we have.
It sounds like it's a political, one of the political.
Yeah, it does, it does sound political.
Well, we're going to ask both, all people the same question.
So why is a conservation commission?
Because we want to know how these folks are going to deal with conversation, con- conservation issues, but not personal issues, we're not looking for.
Which is conservation issues.
Just conversations.
Okay, all right, I'll do that.
You asked a good question.
Yeah.
What?
Of, uh, of, of, of.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, well, but.
Okay, no problem.
Because when you first said it.
We don't want to have.
When you first said it, why are we doing that?
Yeah.
His stand on conservation. I I I, I want to know, as an individual, how.
Yeah, as an individual, I was interested in answering that question.
How they stand on conservation.
So what's saying that there was, and we were asked to come about one, we had one question that we could ask. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
I just wonder how appropriate this for commission to to do that, that's all. I am interested in your positions.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it should come from the position.
Yeah, I'm against any kind of lobbying, one way or another, but knowing how the politicians would handle conservation issues.
That's important, absolutely, that's what you're saying to ask, like, how, like, what, what are you looking at for the future?
Exactly, but it's coming, questions of conservation issues.
Right, we care.
We want to, we want to.
As a commission, we care, I'm not talking about individuals, so your individuals stop to the side.
I'm having a trouble with that, just, to me, it's very political, even though I think that our jurisdiction doesn't cover that.
We talked about how many, you know, and I asked a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you just, you.
What's the problem? Sure, if it's appropriate, because I, it's a good point, that, you know. I'm interested in answering these questions personally, but I'm not sure when there's a debate, a presidential debate, and the writing questions about from organizations. Like, that's what the idea is. Yeah, but we, but we're, we're not, we're more, we're part of the town, you know? I mean, you don't get a write-in question from the State Department in presidential, or from the FBI. You get, uh, private organizations, like, you know, the Better Business Bureau.
Well, so you're asking, so your question is, is it legal for us to do?
Is it appropriate?
Because. I don't know, it's legal, more appropriate.
All right, let's, we'll find out if it's appropriate. I I don't want to wait until August, so I'll find out if it's appropriate. I'll have Aaron send out, if it is appropriate, we'll send out an email asking for suggestions for questions. And then we can discuss them and find out, in this room, we should have a system of checks and balances to make sure we're not asking a politically motivated question, but rather a responsible conservation question.
Yeah, it's always going to be construed that the answer to the question is going to influence votes, power.
Well, if it's, we're going to not pour pesticides.
Wouldn't there be a way to do it very general?
Well, but that's a personal thing, yeah, I mean, it's going to.
Well, not for us, we're not to raise you, you can't have pesticides in our water. So, yeah, we should be, you know, you know, are they aligned with our mission?
Yeah.
And I mean, and also we're, we make suggestions to the board.
Yeah, no.
We're a recommendation.
We are a recommendation, right. So we'll find out and we'll go from there. I don't, hey, so you.
I was just wondering if there was a way to do it.
And we can't hear you, because you're.
Okay. Oh, did I unmute my, oh, didn't, I muted.
Hold on, you know what? Right now.
Okay. What I was saying was, can you hear me?
You know what?
Can you hear me?
I I can hear you, but no one else.
No one else.
Because you went, you went from, uh, hold on, I'm going to put you on the, it's not you, it's me.
Okay, because I have a, I have a speaker.
Yeah, you're good, hold on, give me one second. What's the speaker? Okay, we should be able to hear you now.
Okay, what I was wondering is, could, you know, you do very, 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 you know, something very general, like, ask the candidate to just make a comment on a a conservation, you know, that seems to me to be, uh, you know, rather than a specific conservation issue, just ask the co- uh, the candidates to comment on conservation in this town, their thoughts.
I I, again, we're to find out if it's appropriate, um, and if it is, then we'll get together and and, uh, and put our ideas together and get the best one. You know, in case we only have an option to say one, if we can say multiple, and we're all angry that they're all good stuff. You know, but let's, you know, the the point was made, it was a good point, let's find out if it's appropriate, and we'll take it from there. Uh, but Tova, while you're on, uh, I don't know if you heard, but we need a little bit of help on Joey's trail as well as the community garden. Uh, and we were thinking that, you know, with Joey's trail, besides, um, doing weeding and some maintenance and things that have to happen, you know, maybe we could, maybe there's some species that we should be eradicating from there, um, or replacing with better species. So is that something that you have time to work with Caitlin on?
Sure, I can certainly help to identify, um, invasives and that sort of thing, and, um, I mean, in introducing other plants is, is, you know, can be costly and, um, you know, i- i- in a wild environment like that, you know, less than successful, but, um, I'd certainly be glad to go over and take a look. I, um, and I don't know if you've got an actual, um, do you have an actual mic? Or are you using the computer mic?
I I have a mic.
Okay, because I could, I I couldn't hear Kathy at all, um, but, and and that side of the room was a little hard to hear.
Yeah.
Just in general for hybrid.
So that, that mic was unfortunately on the exact opposite side of the room from them. Uh, because it's also connected to the, um, to the, uh, the video camera, but, uh, for Roxbury's invested in, uh, technology and hopefully the next time we do this, it'll be here, it's just on backward. If not, I'll set up two computers with two video cameras and mics next time, so we can hit both sides of the room.
I mean, I could hear Teresa really well, but.
But she was right, she was literally right next to the mic.
Yeah, yeah. But I I, some of the, some of the conversation, I just couldn't hear it at all.
Yeah, sorry, Bo.
Yeah, but it's just FYI, but, um, but I'd be glad to go over and, you know, go, I'd be delighted to.
Now, do you guys have each other's contact?
I think I have your email, Tova. Um, if not, I can get it, it's on the thread.
Aaron has it.
Yeah, I have it, Tova, I'll give it to Caitlin.
I think what they're most concerned about is because Teresa had brought up, um, doing some trail maintenance and they don't want to, um, get rid of any natives that are there, and then they don't want, obviously, to, yeah, so we just needed expertise.
I'd be glad to, glad to help out and glad to meet you there and do it.
Right. All right, so with that, it is 8:30. Uh, do I hear a motion for the adjournment of the ability order?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Go here in a second. All right, that was Caitlin's eighty seconds, any, uh, anybody? Everybody in favor?
Hi.
All right, anybody opposed? With that, we're going to adjourn. Tova, thank you for joining us on this hybrid, and we'll work on it for, uh, for next month, but we'll talk before then, okay?
Thank you.
Have a great night.